... 11th, 2019, special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Zagajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Carpeian.
Here.
Erin Ajarian.
Here. May we have your report?
Agenda for the June 11th, 2019, special public meeting of the City Council is posted on Thursday, June 6th, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
First item.
Before you is a Director of Committee Development regarding consideration of program design of a monthly housing subsidy program for lower-income Glendale renters. One has a motion approving the program as deemed appropriate.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this item has been before you at least two other times based on direction that was given by the City Council for staff to get more information and provide that back to the City Council. Today, we are before you to really cover the program design elements for the monthly subsidy program that the Council, again, gave us direction on at our last budget study session, which was in May. With that, we'll go directly to Mr. Zovak, Assistant Director for Committee Development, who has a PowerPoint presentation to take you through those elements. And if you can provide us with direction, then staff can go put the program together and come back for some more information at a later date. Mr. Zovak.
Mr. Zovak.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this item is a continuation of previous discussions that the City Council has had about establishing a pilot program related to a monthly housing As Ms. Beers mentioned, on May 14th, the City Council had a study session on Measure S funding, and at that point, City Council committed approximately $4.2 million annually for a two-year program, pilot program. So, the $4.2 annually, so overall, for the two-year period, it'd be an $8.4 million. At the recent budget adoption, the City Council adopted next fiscal year's budget for this item at $4.2 million. And then this meeting is for the consideration of program design features for the monthly housing subsidy program. The program design, what it does is it helps establish the minimum qualifications for this program. It is a new program. It defines and clarifies certain policies of assistance and denials of assistance, and it defines priorities or any priorities that the City Council would like to serve. So, within this presentation, some of the elements that we are presenting to you today is a summary of previous council direction and discussions that we had heard and incorporated into this program design. Some of the recommendations are staff recommendations, and they are just recommendations by staff. Council has the ability to make any changes to those if they wish. And then there are some areas in which we're requesting further council direction on some certain program elements. In particular, today's discussion is on the category of senior households and disability. What we did hear is that the City wished to, City Council wished to establish a program in which they would assist 1,000 initial households, provide a $300 a month subsidy over a two-year program. That's $3.6 million annually in direct assistance. What we are providing in terms of additional program design elements is that there's the potential for households, initial households selected for this program at the outset, the very beginning, might terminate early from the program. So, is there an ability to serve additional families above the 1,000? We are proposing that there is. And what we are saying is that if an initial household at the 1,000 terminates from the program, for whatever reasons, that a subsequent household could be pulled from the waiting list to replace them. That subsequent household that comes onboard to replace an initial household does not get their own new 24-month term. They'll just assume the remaining term of that initial household member. So, if someone after six months on the program terminates from the program, someone could be pulled from the waiting list and serve that remaining 18 months of subsidy. And consequently, someone at the 23rd month mark could terminate from the program. We can pull someone from the waiting list, and that person only has a one month of subsidy. So, there's never more than 24 months' worth of subsidy, considering the overall cap of $3.6 million. We are saying that the replacement and putting in the program designed that replacement household can only serve the remaining time of the initial household term. Replacement household must accept the next available slot or subsidy that is offered. And that requirement stems from someone that might be pulled off the waiting list, be told that there's an opening that they could assume, that opening only has eight months' worth left of subsidy. And someone on that waiting list then saying, you know, let me decline this one. I'd like to check and see if the next person terminated might have 20 months of subsidy available, and I'd like to stay on that one. We're saying, in this particular case, when there's an opening, the next person pulled off the waiting list must accept that next available slot. We don't want necessarily people on the waiting list to be picking and choosing slots depending upon vacancies that may happen and the length of those vacancies. And if someone refuses and declines a subsidy offer once they're pulled from the waiting list, then they're removed from the waiting list. And maybe I should say, at any point in time, if there's a question, feel free to ask.
So, I have a question. I didn't, Peter, I didn't understand that. If it's, we're only going out two years at this point.
Correct.
So, assuming everyone is, the new recipients would have a 24-month entitlement period.
Correct.
And someone is notified that there's an opening. How could they wait for a longer entitlement period? I don't understand how that.
So, let's say that the first person selected of the initial 1,000 people goes on the program for a year, and then, for whatever reasons, terminates. They have 12 months of subsidy left.
Right.
Someone else, who was brought into the program later on down, because we're not going to be able to ramp up and qualify 1,000 people on day one.
Oh, yes, okay.
People will be phased, qualified, over time.
Okay, that makes sense now.
You'll see the numbers, enrollment numbers, go up, hit 1,000, and then really start to trend down. So, someone might be baking.
That answers, yeah, that answers it. So, everyone isn't starting at the same.
Correct.
Time.
Yeah, but one second, one question, Mr. Mayor. So, but that is not, so, the first 1,000 that are being qualified, they should be receiving for two-years' program.
24 months, correct.
24 months. So, if it takes two years to qualify 1,000 people, because we cannot, you have to ramp them up, you said, right? How long would it take to qualify that 1,000 families, you think?
It wouldn't take two years to qualify the 1,000. We think we'd be able to qualify 1,000 households somewhere around the six-month point, seven-month point.
So, we, the reason it will take longer for them to receive the subsidy is because we haven't received the taxes yet?
There are different reasons that would extend time out for someone to qualify for the program, whether or not they comply with the materials they need to bring in.
Now, let's say you qualify 1,000 people, 1,000 families, within six months, right?
Correct.
And then they start receiving the subsidy, and their time period is two months, two years. Am I correct? So, the guy that starts in January of 2020, let's say, that started receiving for two years, it will be January of 2022 that ends. But the one that receives the subsidy in March of 2020, or any month, April of 2020, they will continue receiving the subsidy until April of 2024, 2022?
Correct.
So, two years from the day they start receiving the subsidy.
Right.
It will be two years from that day.
So, it's a two-year program that might spill over into three years before everyone's completed with it.
Right. So, what you're saying is if number 1,001 gets to be on that list, we'll just complete the remaining months of that two years.
Right. So, if there's a vacancy, and that vacancy is applicant number one pulled from the lottery, and they were on the program for 12 months, we pull someone off the waiting list, that person will only be able to assume their remaining 12 months of the original applicant. They are not promised two years' worth, because at that point, you'll be exceeding the $3.6 million budget that's been allocated for this.
Sure.
And the reason that's being proposed this way is that we can simply have a 1,000 cap and serve 1,000 people. But over a two-year program, we do expect to have some vacancies. Is there this, and it's an ability to serve some more people. Why not pull them off the list if you don't exceed your overall cap of $3.6 million? The Council just wants to cap it at the 1,000, and if the vacancy occurs, and you don't want to issue a new subsidy to, for that remaining period of time, to anyone off the waiting list, we can go that route as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, Slide 6, just provide some summary of the subsidy itself. It's a pilot program, a subsidy, no subsidy beyond the 24 months. Less than 24 months in subsidy if household is a replacement household. So, there are situations where someone will not be able to receive the full 24 months if they're a replacement household. Applicants will be selected via housing lottery and subsequent waiting list, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the presentation. And then what we are proposing is that applicant households who are receiving already Section 8 assistance or living in an affordable housing project sponsored by the Glendale Housing Authority, we are saying right now that they are not eligible to participate in the monthly housing subsidy program. What staff had heard from the City Council is you wanted to establish a program that didn't duplicate any of the other programs or projects that, and services that we're providing, completely independent. And following that line, that direction, we are proposing that if anyone is on a Section 8 program or living in an affordable housing project, they are not eligible to apply. Again, about the subsidy, it is a monthly subsidy. It's proposed at $300. That is a subsidy that is per household. It's not on a per-person basis. So, a household of six people, they're receiving $300. Household of one person, $300. There is no difference.
Again, that's, that's based on, if there are more than, if there's more than one person there that's a senior, this is based on the income of the entire household.
Correct.
The extreme low income. It's going to be based on the income of the entire household, not just that one person.
So, one of the minimum criterias that we are proposing in the later slide is that the household, total household income cannot exceed extremely low-income level limits. Correct. So, we make that statement because we don't want someone who's saying, well, we're a two-person household, we're both seniors, we're both extremely low-income, we should both be receiving $300 a month in subsidy. We're saying, no, the household is only receiving $300. The subsidies will only be issued via monthly direct deposits that will be made by the city to a banking institution identified by the applicant and whose name appears on the account as account holder. That is, for the most part, that is the direction that finance has been going in these types of subsidy-type programs. It is a direct deposit program, and it's the same as Social Security and some of the other programs that are out there. They're all being based on direct deposits into accounts. We feel that this should be the same, and it's actually a little bit of easier work as it relates to finance and the issuance of checks. No longer are we issuing checks with the direct deposits. Per IRS and city policies, every applicant must submit a W-9, and they must pass the IRS tax identification number matching process in order to receive subsidy payments. So, every applicant must have a tax ID in order to qualify for this program. As a condition of receiving assistance, finance is required. Each applicant will be issued a 1099 each year for the amount received in the prior calendar year. Applicants may use the subsidy to pay for any type of housing expenses, including, but not limited to, rents, utilities, medicine, healthcare costs, and food for the household. And as a condition of receiving the monthly subsidy, applicants may be asked to account for its use during enrollment in the program. And those last two bullet points are, as staff began to assess the program and some of the parameters of it, we looked at that $300 subsidy and determined whether or not there was an ability to try and tie them, the applicant, to demonstrating that they're using it towards their rent. And it's very difficult to be able to do that, asking an applicant to issue one check in this amount, another check for the remaining $300 amount. So, what we're saying is that the subsidy can be used for a variety type of reasons, rent, utilities, medicine, health, and food, and that we will be asking periodically of the applicants how they are accounting for their money and what they are spending it on. So, it's not a straight requirement that they demonstrate what they're spending on. It's more of a soft requirement that they give us some feedback so we can start to collect some data on how they are using the additional subsidy. There are some minimum qualifications that we did hear from the City Council you'd like to establish. One was that you asked that applicants be a resident of Glendale. Staff is proposing, at this point in time, that the residency be established at the time of application. If there's a different direction the Council wants to provide, we'd be willing to take that consideration. We have also heard that this is a program designed to assess renter households, so that would be a minimum qualification as well. Staff would be asking for copies of lease agreements, utility billing, mail service, other identification that will tie that household to that unit in Glendale. The unit in Glendale must be a legal residential unit. We will not, we are not proposing paying a subsidy on an illegal garage conversion, some type of patio enclosure, or something that's not permitted. So, it must be a legal residential unit. We took a look at this one particular item here, and we are recommending that if the applicant is living in a unit that is owned by a family member, we won't disallow it. So, that is allowed, and that applicant could participate into the program.
Can you repeat that?
If the applicant is living in a unit that is owned by a family member, the question at the staff level was, do we allow that, or not allow that, or how do we handle that? And we looked at the Section 8 program. The Section 8 program, under certain circumstances, allows a Section 8 participant to rent a unit from a family member, and that family member receive the monthly housing assistance payment, under certain circumstances. At this point in time, staff is recommending that we allow applicants who are living in a unit owned by their family to participate in the program.
I have a problem with that, because I just feel like we're giving $300, we're enriching the family. I mean, if they're living in a family-owned unit, shouldn't it be affordable? Or, I mean, shouldn't, I mean, I just don't, I don't agree with this particular bullet point. I don't know if any of my colleagues have a question about that or a feeling about that, but that's my interpretation and feeling about this particular item.
Let's clarify the definition of that. So, the previous bullet point was that it has to be rental-only.
Mm-hmm.
A rental household. So, this would be a unit in a building that a family member owns.
Correct.
Or a condo, let's say, that a family member.
Correct.
Owns. Either one of those scenarios.
Correct. So, if I own a triplex, and my elderly parents rent one of the units from me in that triplex, they are somehow selected onto the program via the lottery, and they are eligible, we would not hold it against them that they are living and renting from a relative's unit.
I think I agree with Ms. Devine on that, is that the need, the critical, that doesn't become a critical housing need for that person, because the fam, there's a support group for that family. I mean, that's just my opinion. Let me hear what my colleagues.
I hear what you're saying, but that family, that family need has to rent somewhere, right? Either whether they rented from one of their relatives, or they rented from a landlord that they don't know, what's the difference? They need to pay the rent.
Well, but, but, but it would be okay if they were renting somewhere else where there was a landlord. We're talking about them renting from their family. That would be like you renting to your daughter, and she's receiving subsidy because you're charging her too much rent. So, I just don't see that being a crisis.
Yeah. This was, in discussing this with staff, as we were proposing this, this was actually one item that we weren't all in agreement on. There were some staff members that made the case that there are some people that rent units to their family members, but they still have a mortgage, they still have bills to make and pay in terms of the landlord. So, there are still some number, some amount of rent that that parent, let's say, if that's the example we're going to use, that parent is paying to their child to be able to rent that unit.
Well, so then, we're paying it actually to the landlord, or the parents, or the, whoever owns that building. We're paying them the $300 so that they can make their mortgage.
Correct. But you're also doing that for private landlord. I mean, your landlord's receiving rent, and they're turning around and paying for their expenses. Again, it's just something that is a recommendation by staff will certainly take council direction.
You know, it applies, I understand completely what you're saying, and that was the argument that I had for some of the, some of the senior housing units, or some of the people who are on Section 8 and they're receiving Section 8. Their children may be very well off, but the law says the children do not have to take care of their parents, for example. So, that's what I'm saying. There are people who are on, for example, on a subsidy program, a Section 8 program, for example, but their children may be in a very, very good position financially, but the law does not dictate or say that they have to take care of their parents. That's, that's one of the issues that, I don't know if we can do anything about it or not, but I understand what you're saying. It's the same, the same concept, basically.
I just think that that is not, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, finish.
I just don't.
And we'll come back to you.
Go.
Sorry. What it is, is if, this is in a case that the kids, they give a unit to the parents, not the other way. So, the kid is working, they're working hard, and they make their, you know, expenses, they cover their expenses. They cannot take care of the parent. But they have a small unit, let's say they gave it to the parent to live in it. So, they're separate families. We can't burden that those who have, I mean, the parent, or kid, or daughter. And then, we are getting involved with something that it's very hard to say who's related to who. Let's assume, then city has to be a police. Like, if I gave it to my wife's father, let's say, then who has to come and say that what's going on? Let's figure out what's the relation now. So, that will be a difficult task to do for, you know, for 300, the city should explain more than that, to figure out who's related to who.
And this is, this is exactly the conversation that staff had, and the comments for and against it as well. Enforcement of it would be very difficult. If someone was Mr. and Mrs. Smith, and then the applicant was Mr., the landlord was Mr. Smith, the applicant was Smith, there might be an ability to say, is Smith related to you? If there are different names, it would be very difficult to prove. Unless it's volunteered by the applicant.
So, would there have to be a lease agreement to prove that there are renter?
Correct.
They would have to show a valid lease, either a month-to-month, or a...
Yeah, correct.
Now, we have the right to lease.
There would be that requirement at the outset.
You mentioned that under Section 8, this is allowed.
Under certain circumstances for Section 8, as a reasonable accommodation.
What are the, say again?
As a reasonable accommodation. So, if a family member is suffering from some type of disability, and that particular unit is somehow built out to accommodate them and their disability, and a doctor's note accompanies that and certifies that this unit meets my client's disability needs by the following reasons, the Section 8 program does allow an exemption and allow for a Section 8 participant to rent from a relative.
So, is that the only way? Is that the only?
A reasonable accommodation request? Correct.
So, that's the only way? So, that's right there is...
It's different, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's not like they can do it, they can just do it.
So, if someone, Section 8, I'm sorry if I may. Go ahead, go ahead, finish.
No, 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 I'm, go ahead.
If I have a Section 8 voucher, and I want to go rent a place, and the only place that I can find is from my cousin's mother that has a place, and I'm trying to rent from, I cannot rent from them? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. You have to go ahead and submit a reasonable accommodation request as to why that unit, why you must rent from that unit. And what we typically hear is, it's one block away from my three doctor's offices, and I do not drive, and I need to be within a walking distance. And I see Anne Bachman.
First time I'm hearing.
From the Section 8 office coming up right behind me.
It's limited to some family members, direct family members, parents, brothers, sisters. It's not your cousin's uncle or something like that.
Right, right. Okay.
So, same thing can apply here, basically.
If that's the desire of the City Council.
Cousin's uncle is your father.
I'm sorry.
I would, you know, I would...
It could be your other uncle.
I don't want to get into...
I would go along, I would go along with that, if they use the Section 8.
Yeah. And, you know, I think the whole point is, in my discussion, is we want these funds to, to go as far as they can and go to, really, the most needy, who maybe don't have the luxury of some sort of family subsidy. And I know that there's, you know, the examples are good examples, that, you know, they have their own mortgage to me, you're renting it to someone else otherwise. But I think we all are trying to balance between stretching those funds as far as they can go versus ease of the process of verifying the...
And what we wanted to do when we were proposing this is provide the City Council some flexibility. We didn't hear you say, we want to create a Section 8 duplicate program. So, that's why there are some, some elements here that might be different from a Section 8 program, and there may be reasons for it, and may be reasons you might want to make some changes to it. So, I think I heard then that there's a desire to...
I agree with Ms. Devine.
For direct family members, rentals from units owned by direct family members, a type of reasonable accommodation process similar to the Section 8 program would be required in order to allow that to happen.
So, that would be the criterion rather than the preference that was mentioned in the staff report?
Right. This is strictly criteria.
Okay, great. Perfect.
Okay. And then, so, going to the next scenario that could happen.
Before, yes, Mr. Zagajanian.
I just wanted to add that issue I discussed before, that we give this, you know, monthly subsidy, or whatever the name is, that $300, to those who are residents of Glendale, at least for past 20, for past two years. Because otherwise, you're inviting from Burbank, LA, and somewhere else to just move here to get that $300. So, if we can add, if they...
So, that would be changing a recommendation.
Length of residency?
Yeah, at least they live in Glendale for two years, not, otherwise, everybody would move to Glendale to receive that $300.
Two years, we have some...
Two years of residency prior to the application must be established in order to be eligible for the program.
Subject to, yeah, just subject to our, we, we're going to look at that and just make sure there's no constitutional issues with that. So, subject to legal review.
Okay. So, the next bullet point would be, an applicant who owns in whole or in part any residential dwelling unit, real estate, is not eligible for the program. This is really, when we talk, when we were talking in the previous bullet about living in a unit owned by a relative, this is a situation where the actual applicant is somehow entitled to some property that's a residential dwelling unit. We are saying not eligible for the program, if that's the case.
Are you going to do a title search? I mean, how would you do it?
Yes, we'll be looking at credit reports, and see what they show up.
We had a recommendation from a group about assets, and how perhaps we should look at their assets as well, because I know in Section 8 housing, a lot of times, we get complaints that people are in Section 8 housing, and they're driving a Mercedes or Rolls-Royce. And so, I'm thinking that maybe instead of just saying what, if they own that apartment building, or any apartment, that we should actually have an asset check. Is that asking too much to, you know, they may own, they may have a million dollars in the bank, and yet they're living in, you know, in getting this kind of a...
Social Security.
Social Security, or be in Section 8, or get this $300, and...
A million dollars in the bank would come into the calculation of extremely low income and how we look at that.
So, you do look at assets?
We do look at assets.
Okay, all right.
Okay. And so, I'm hearing agreement on anyone owning in whole or part residential real estate, not eligible? Okay.
Yes.
We are all asking, at the time of application, that all household members must be listed in the application for the monthly family subsidy program. Failure to identify and or list a household member may disqualify an applicant from the program. What we really need, because the level of interest we think is going to happen on this program, and how many applications we'll have to go through, we really want to stress to everyone that they need to be able to list everyone in their household, and not try and hedge their bets by not listing certain people. But if they, by chance, get selected saying, oh, I want to add, I didn't tell you about three other people that are on, in my household, we want to make sure that they know upfront as part of the application process, they must list everyone, or there are possible consequences. And then, after qualifying for the subsidy program, an applicant may not add a household member to their household unless it's by birth, marriage, or adoption. So, we don't want someone on the program for six months qualifying and saying, I'm now bringing in two additional people into my household. We are saying, no, that's not possible unless it's by birth, marriage, or adoption. Here's where we get to the income criteria. We heard that you would want to serve households that are extremely low-income. Extremely low-income is annual household income that does not exceed 30% area median income, as established annually by HUD. The example, one-person household, total household income not to exceed $21,950 a year, two-person household, $25,000, zero, five, zero, a year. So, your typical applicant who's on Social Security and very modest or to no savings would be able to qualify for this program. The income would be counted... The income would be counted per Section 8 program guidelines, and in those program guidelines, financial support from non-household members is counted towards their income. What we think you will see, and what we've seen in a lot in the Section 8 program, is that someone that is extremely low income is receiving some form of financial support from a non-household member, going back to families, are supporting their parents. And under the Section 8 program, that financial support counts as a calculation towards your income. So if someone, some applicant who's pulled and being qualified is receiving enough assistance that they're over the extremely low income unit, they wouldn't, or limits, they would not qualify for the program. And there is no preference, we heard no desire to rank or provide a preference to people based upon how low their income is. It's just a minimum, if you're extremely low income, you qualify. Nothing else with regards to that. And here's an area that we're looking for some direction on, and we've come up with a proposal, and we'd be interested in hearing what the council might think about this. We did hear from the city council about trying to assist those households that are rent burdened. If you recall during the discussion on rent control, we had some census data, and that census data for Glendale, it said 63% of renter households in Glendale are rent burdened, paying more than 30% of their income towards their rent, towards their housing cost. We are not proposing that applicants demonstrate this rent burden test. We are making the statement that, based upon the census data, where a majority of renter households are rent burdened, the fact that this is a program serving extremely low-income people, the fact that this is a program for seniors, that the rent burden status is assumed, and that we wouldn't necessarily be asking applicants to demonstrate that rent status. And the reason we are proposing this is because we saw potential issues that might come into play is when, if someone is receiving family assistance to make up for rent, then they wouldn't be able to demonstrate that rent burden. And we didn't think that was the intent of the city council in establishing this program, that you do want to help these people, even those that are receiving this assistance, as long as that doesn't put them over the extremely low-income limits. So in this particular case, staff's proposing rent burden, as long as they meet the ELI, senior status, based upon the census data, it is assumed that every household is rent burdened, without any further documentation.
So I want to understand this. So based on this criteria, many of the seniors who are on Social Security, they are rent burdened already anyways, right?
In our opinion, based on census data, is telling us that, correct.
Almost 80% are rent burdened?
63% of renter households are rent burdened.
I'm talking about seniors.
And if you want to add a layer of seniors to it, it's an even higher number. I don't have that number right now before you, but it is a number over 63%.
Seniors get, what, $800 a month each?
Correct.
So it's $1,600. The basic rent is $1,200, right? You know, one bedroom. I'm just shooting out the number. What is our median income, median rents in Glendale? $1,200, $1,100, $1,250, something like that, for a one bedroom. So even for Section 8, that's what it is. So that's almost, it is more than your 30% income. So all the seniors who are on Social Security, they are rent burdened anyways.
That's an easy example, but when you have someone receiving family support, and that family is supporting the full rent, or majority of the rent, it's difficult for the tenant to then say, I'm rent burdened. You'd say, no, you're receiving family support for that rent. That burden is not there. And as I said, we didn't hear that that is the way you would want to operate the program. So this is why we are saying or proposing that the rent burden test be met simply by the ELI in the senior category.
One quick question, I don't know, maybe, I don't know if you're able to answer it. If you're receiving Social Security and you're receiving some sort of a help from your, financial help from your, you know, children, for example, you would not reduce your amount of Social Security, would they? If your children help you $200, $300 a month?
It depends on how that particular household reports it back to Social Security. If it's a larger sum, it might impact them.
So whatever they pay, if it's a larger sum, they would deduct it from their Social Security?
Possibly. I can't necessarily answer that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Agagian.
I was going to ask to explain that last sentence one more time, but as far as I know, when somebody is getting Social Security and gets money from the son given, they deduct that amount, because it happened to one of my relatives, was receiving $100 from their kids. They reduced that with $100 from the amount they were receiving from the government. But however, that's not my issue now. Could you explain that no individual certification? Explain one more time what you were saying, leave me there.
Typically, in order to demonstrate that you're rent burdened, you would be looking at their gross income, you would be looking at their rent, and do they pay 30% or more of their income towards that rent of that unit? We go back to counting income, and under the Section 8 guidelines, family support is counted as income. So if an applicant has enough family support, they may not be able to demonstrate rent burden, because that family support is kicking in. So rather than have to go through the process of doing that type of test, we're just saying, according to the census, and these two characteristics of extremely low income and senior, that's, in most cases, a rent burden household. Nothing else is needed. No documentation, no calculation, no, not qualifying for the program, it's just something that's automatic.
Ms. Devine.
So then you're assuming that that 68% of the population is going to be requesting or applying for this funding?
Potentially, but they may not all be seniors. That is not necessarily, it's just renter households in Glendale, not senior renter households in Glendale, that US, that census statistic. So as you start to add a layer of extremely low income and senior, you're going to see that percentage kick from 63% to a much, much higher number. And it gets, in our opinion, getting so close to 100%, why even require the rent burden tests? Let's just say that it's met with this criteria.
Thank you, okay.
The other criteria that we heard that you would wish to assist on this program are those households with a disability. Disability is a condition that we've been able to manage in all our various programs. It's, disability is defined two ways, either through the Social Security Act, typically on your Social Security benefits, when someone has proved Social Security that they are disabled, there's a designation on your Social Security benefits. There's also a process of being designated disabled through a doctor's notification and a Section 504 certification that's provided by a doctor. So that's the definition of disability. Is there a desire by the city council to establish disability as a minimum criteria for applying? Or is that after applying, that those that are disabled of the overall pool of applicants might have some type of higher preference than those that are not disabled? That's the direction that we're looking for today.
Mr. Agagian.
I think we are adding layer of bureaucracy. We're getting involved with every item. I thought we want to help the families with $300, and now we are adding, how are we going to deal with disability? And I'm sure will be more items that you guys have to go through and make certain that goes along with the rules and regulation. I think we're going too far, in my opinion, I don't know.
So the only thing is that I think there's no doubt that the demand for this program is going to far outstrip the 1,000 vouchers or entitlements that we have. And when we discussed about this, we wanted to give it to the most needy. And if, you know, to me, someone that is, two people that both have extremely low income and are the same in all other aspects, but one is disabled, I don't know how SSI would play into that, because if they're disabled, they're presumably eligible for SSI. But all that being equal, I think we should favor the person that's disabled.
I agree.
That's, I mean, that's my thought about it. I don't know if you can share that.
I appreciate that. And we're all on the same page, but look what's going on with the Section 8 program. No one else can get anything, because the people who have five points, of course, they're, they should be single instead of coupled for Section 8 program and have five points. No one else can get it because Section 8 program doesn't open anymore. I mean, there is no more funding for it, but I don't know, it's a tough decision. I mean, there are, financially, they're in the same situation. Health-wise, they're not. I understand that. I don't know, if you, if you only, if you give them like one extra point because they're disabled, then no one else can get it, because there's so many couples who are all, they have, one of them will be disabled. I don't know, we'll discuss it, I...
I mean, at some point, we're going to be drawing a line, even if it's the fact that we're just going to take lottery numbers and do a lottery. I imagine, now don't forget, when we had 34 low-income units, we had 17,000 applicants. Imagine...
18,000.
18,000. Imagine what a thousand $300 vouchers are going to bring us. So it's going to far outstrip the number of individuals we can help. I don't know how we, I mean, it's just a matter of trying to be fair and setting maybe objective, objective guidelines as to who gets it. There's going to be 1,000 happy people and about 15,000 unhappy people. I guarantee that.
And just a reminder, there is a preference in the Section 8 program for those households that are disabled. It's been in place since 2001.
That's what I was referring to, but by, by being disabled, also being single, you get, you get more points. You get to that five point. There's, there are so many people on Section 8 list that are coupled, but, and they are disabled, but because they're coupled, they have four points. They don't get to that five, so...
And it's not a criteria?
I'd say it's a different...
I leave that to you guys. I mean, let's talk about that.
Maybe it's best if we place a hold on that, because there are a couple other decision points to make, and you may want to make those...
Yes, let's put an asterisk on that and come back.
So, speaking of seniors, so now we get to the point of senior household. We did hear from the city council, you wanted to assist senior household. Is that exclu, so our question from staff is whether or not that's exclusive to seniors. Is that a minimum criteria to apply for this program, that you must be a senior household? And then further, what type of senior household are you interested in assisting? There's two alternatives or scenarios that we came up with. Is it a senior household where everyone in the household must be age, over age 62 to qualify? Single person, 62 or older, it's easy. Single, or a married couple, head of household is 65, spouse is 59. If you maintain that everyone must be over 62, that particular household would not qualify. And then same for this scenario that we described earlier, multi-generational household, head of household might be 80, living with the 60-year-old daughter and three grandchildren, all under the age of 18. So is there a desire to have mandatory everyone over 62? Is there a desire maybe to have head of household must be 62, and a spouse or domestic partner may be the under, under the age of 62, no one else? Or would it be open to only one person in the household must be age 62 or older to qualify?
I mean, in general, again, I want to, I'm sorry.
Mr. Agagian.
I want to say, we have to make this pool smaller, those who are going to apply, to make it smaller, because we want to give to 1,000 people, and we know more than 15,000 or 20,000, they will come forward. So if we bring this age down, the other criteria is to make it more simpler. So you're going to end up with too many people, and you want to help this 1,000 people. I think this, you have to put more restriction to have the group of people who come to apply to be smaller.
Ms. Devine.
Well, and I think alternative two is probably that direction, in making it, going by the age, which you're about to explain, will make the pool smaller, don't you think?
Well, must, the question would be, must everyone in the household be over the age of 62 to be eligible for this program?
So alternative one would make it small. Alternative one is all members are over 62. Alternative two is only one member who is...
Correct.
Yeah.
So alternative one would limit the size.
Because there will be too many people, they will come forward, and then they all will be disappointed that what you guys have done.
I'm sorry, I was not talking about this alternative. I was talking about the next one, going by the ages 80, 70, 60.
Yeah, we haven't got...
That would, that would make the pool smaller, which, right? Let's go on to the next...
Is there more to this?
Go on to the next.
Okay, let's see more before we cast our...
There's a ban, they have a ban. Okay, so again, everyone must be over the age of 62, in that type of scenario, a spouse, a domestic partner, under the age of 62, that household cannot qualify. Multi-generational households will not qualify. And then the alternative is, at least someone in the house must be 62 or older to qualify. And in that scenario, if that person, if that qualifying person who is 62 or older, let's say passes away, you have no one else in the household that meets that senior eligibility, subsidy would stop in, under that scenario. All right. So then here's, here's another item that we had heard, and we heard this at the May 14th Measure S study session, is whether or not there was desire to look at banding, and what we're calling is banding, banding applicants into groups by age, and then assisting them in some manner after banding them. What we heard was that there might be an interest in taking all of the senior applicants that apply, and then putting them into bands of those that are in their 60s, those that are in their 70s, and those that are in their 80s. An 80s and above is, you know, 110 if that's the case. And that the desire might be to assist everyone in that upper band of 80-plus years old, and assist them first, and drop down, if there's an ability to drop down. If they're more than 1,000, then that's, that's the population you're going to be assisting for the most part. If not, though, then drop down, the next people that get assistance would be those in the band of 70 years of age. And then finally, those in the 60 years of age would be assistance. That's what we heard. We didn't get any confirmation from it. We're asking now, is that something you wish to pursue or not?
Okay. So what do you think about that?
The first one?
80?
Yeah. And no, that's the way it is. 80 and what has been mentioned here, to make the pool as smaller as possible, otherwise it will be more, creates more problem than...
Mr. Garbichin.
No, I think we just have to leave it, we made the pool small, just, I think this program came about to help seniors. And I think we want to help, you know, different segments of the senior community. If you just limit it to 80 and up, how about 79 and a half? I mean, it's just, when they're seniors, they're seniors. They fill up an application, we have a lottery, whoever wins, wins. Because I don't know if it's, I want to limit that to 80 plus now. I know you shrink that pool, but there may be other people that are 75 or 78, and they're in need as well.
How about 75 and up?
70 and up, or even 70 and up.
70 and up?
70 and up.
Okay, 70 and up, as a preference, as a priority.
You know, if I may, Mr. Devine, we are, we are trying to catch as many of our most vulnerable in this net, the most vulnerable, the ones that really need it. And 62 and 65 and 67, I don't see them as, I remember the people that came to council when we were discussing the right to lease, and they were not 62, or they were elderly, they were seniors. And those are the ones I think that we want to catch. So I would say 70 or 75 and up, 70.
Let's make it 75 and up.
Yeah, I would...
No?
70 is young these days, Mr. Barpetti.
I'm sure it is, but I go along, I think...
I like 75.
I like 75.
Okay.
75.
Sounds like there's a desire.
Mr. Mayor, then it's 75, 75 is the same as 85 is the same as 95.
Yes.
If you're 75 and older, you're eligible, and you go in for the...
Yeah, one more wedge to put in as well, Mr. So both, if they're married couple, both husband and wife has to be, have to be 75 plus, or one of the households, members of the household has to be 75 and up?
Isn't it one, and then the income determines?
That's for the council to decide.
Also, the household, the household should be 75? Is that what we're saying?
No.
Or both husband and wife, or husband and domestic partner?
Yeah.
Has, should be 75?
Why we don't add the previous one, which we say... Why we don't add the previous one, which we say if one is seventy-five and the other is not younger than sixty-two?
Well, it's going to depend on their income, isn't it? And it's the household income, it's not just on one.
At least one person seventy-five, otherwise we're getting.
When staff was was talking about this banding type of criteria, we were assuming one person would have to be seventy-five or above. To then require both would have to be, it could be an obstacle.
So seniors and one of them to be the head of the household to be seventy-five.
So we're going back to that senior discussion right now as to whether or not everyone in the household must be sixty-two or older to qualify.
Yes, yes.
So sixty-two and a spouse at fifty-nine does not qualify.
Yeah.
Say that again, no, what, say that again? We're going.
What you what we've just heard you say is that head of household needs to be seventy-five. Everybody in the household needs to be at least sixty-two. So if you had a head of household who's seventy-five with a fifty-nine-year-old spouse or sixty-year-old spouse, they would not qualify.
What if they have grandkids in the house?
They would not qualify. That's that was the direction that we just heard. Do you want to change that? That's a discussion you need to have.
Let's see, let's see where where we are on that.
That's what I thought.
This was page twelve, which we said.
So the question is.
On page, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. But we said on page.
Okay, may I make a suggestion?
Twelve, mister. On page twelve, we went over and said we want alternative one. So then we follow that, that seventy-five and over is priority. So to be alternative one, but one of the members of the household has to be seventy-five.
Right. And so if a spouse is less than sixty-two, they don't qualify.
Correct, just for the senior criteria, correct.
Anyone in the household.
Anyone in the household.
Anyone in the household would not.
Yeah, all household members must be sixty-two or older to qualify. And then if there's someone in the household that is seventy-five or older, then they're going to be placed in a higher band that provides a higher priority to them.
Okay, that's.
I'm sorry, I heard something different.
Great.
We're not banding, your head of household needs to be seventy-five.
Right.
And everybody in the household needs to be sixty-two.
Sixty-two plus.
Plus.
Yes.
Right, seventy-five.
And we're not banding.
Seventy-five and up is a criteria, is a priority. Eligibility is everyone has to be over sixty-two.
Okay, priorities, see, I.
No, no, no.
I think you said something different.
So if there's a seventy-five, if there's a seventy-five-year-old gentleman married to a sixty-five-year-old wife, that's.
Okay.
That's okay. If the if the wife is fifty-nine, is that?
No, he is asking something else.
So you have a seventy-five, seventy-four-year-old gentleman married to a seventy-three-year-old woman, they would not qualify.
They would not have priority.
They would qualify, but not for the preference.
They would not have priority.
Mr. Garpetian understood it a different way, I'm assuming?
And so what we're saying is you have to have one of them, both of them have to be over the age of sixty-two. One of them, the priority is to be seventy, at least seventy-five.
Yes.
You have the first priority.
Priority or an eligibility?
Priority.
Priority. Seventy-five plus.
Minimum qualifications to apply, everyone must be sixty-two or older. In order to get additional preference, someone in the household must be seventy-five or older.
I think I'm terribly sorry, but I I really think that when we said that they the age requirement qualification is seventy-five or older, that is that makes you eligible to apply. The income, if there are more than if there's more than just that one person in the household, if the income of all of the household is extremely low income, then they would be eligible for this program. If we this, you know, you're talking about making it simple, and this is not making it simple, is it? By going if they're married to someone that's sixty-two, or there's someone in there that's forty-five, and, you know, they're not going to be eligible? Am I misunderstanding?
No, I think it's it's a little bit more difficult when you use priority instead of eligibility, but we'll figure it out if that's what you want to do. So that everybody must be sixty-two to be eligible, everybody in the household.
You just opened up the the whole.
No, sixty-two, and then those that are seventy-five and over get a priority.
That's right.
If that's what you understand, we'll figure out how to do that if that's what you want to do.
That's narrow down that.
All right.
Okay, Peter, keep going.
So with that, then, we're just going to provide you some information about how we've envisioned how the advertising and application process will go. We are not asking for approval of that, and then right away, we're going to start doing this. This will take time for us to go back, plan, and then come back to you. Our desire is to come back to you sometime in August to say, this is what we think our marketing plan will be, how applications will be received, how they'll be evaluated, and things like that. But we just wanted to touch base on just a couple of areas and elements so that when we do plan something and come back, it's consistent with some direction that we've received. So we think that the marketing outreach would include advertising to really just the following groups, the Section Eight waiting list, those people on our city's affordable housing interest list, program participants over at the A R C in Spar Heights Community Center, and then advertising flyers to those Glendale nonprofit social service agencies that cater to Glendale senior clients. So if this is going to be a senior program, that we want to make sure we are advertising to those participants, those agencies, those facilities that cater to those senior clients.
Mr. Agajian.
We don't plan on doing a news press advertising, newspaper advertising, things like that.
But the Section Eight listing person is not losing their position, right?
Correct.
Even though they get the subsidy or the money.
Correct. That is correct. But there is a criteria is that someone, as I said earlier, someone who's currently on the Section Eight program cannot apply for this program.
Yes, you can keep your place.
Someone who is on the Section Eight waiting list can apply for this program. If and when they get pulled and they're now Section Eight participants, their participation in the subsidy program terminates.
One more suggestion.
Mr. Carpet.
On advertising part, I think Adalta Healthcare Centers, I don't know if they're nonprofits or not, but I think that's somewhere that we can we can, I don't know, so many of them are in town, and Adalta Healthcare Centers.
Correct.
If you can advertise in there, so if you have a a meeting or a community meeting in A R C, you can advertise with them, or let them know, you know, distribute flyers, and let them know that there is a a community meeting in A R C or any other.
I would very much like to have strong warnings about fraudulent activity regarding assistance. You know how we have the Section Eight fraudsters that say, I'll get you on Section Eight?
Right.
And I don't know how we worded that, I don't know how we warn, but I want to make sure that there's no, you know, we just warn people, do not, you know, no fee is necessary, do not do not pay someone to process your papers. This is a free-of-charge process.
Correct, and and that's one of the reasons why we are making a recommendation that you're going to see with regards to the application process, and we'd like to get your feedback on it.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the advertising, the senior committee that we've formed. I think there are a lot of resources there.
All right, very good. When we do market the application process, we'll give everyone a three-week window of marketing prior to applications being available and being able to be submitted. We are proposing that applications, obviously, only one application per household will be accepted. Only electronic applications will be accepted for the program. And we are proposing that those electronic applications can only be completed at four locations, at this point, we're proposing four, if there's a desire to have more, we'll look at that. Four locations, four city-sponsored locations, the Housing Division out in our lobby, Central Library, the Adult Recreation Recreation Center, and Spar Heights Community Center. So what we envision is having staff at computer stations at these locations, taking in applications, inputting them into a database that staff is controlling. And, Madam Jari, and this kind of addresses what you were saying, if in our advertising, we tell everyone they must go to one of these four locations and must apply, and it's city staff that is doing the intake on that electronic application, we hope that would avoid issues of people going out and saying, I could help you fill out a form. I don't need help, I'm going to this location here to have it done for me. And then the applications will be taken from that electronic database, entered into a lottery, and selected in order of the priority rankings that the city council decides. And once selected in the lottery, applicants will be screened to determine all of the eligibility criteria for the program. So we don't tend to do any screening, per se, of their income at this point prior to the lottery, it would all be done after the lottery. There are some comments that we'd like to make just regards to situations in which we would like to make clear to applicants that the subsidy program is non-transferable. Again, and and I'll look at bullet point two because we just mentioned that, if someone is on the subsidy program and they're eventually qualified and enrolled into the Section Eight program, subsidy program terminates. They're not able to have both of them. Participation in the subsidy program does not establish any rights to any other rental housing program or project operated by the city of Glendale. It's a two-year pilot program. When those twenty-four months are over, an applicant can't say, I am now eligible to be number one on the waiting list of Section Eight because I'm being terminated from the subsidy program. That's not the case. I cannot, I'm eligible to be number one at Park Passail on their waiting list because I'm being terminated. That's not the case. You have no rights beyond just the subsidy program to any other program that we have. And then the subsidy is considered to be non-transferable when someone were to remove themselves from a unit. If they're terminated from a unit and they don't lease up in any other subsequently qualified unit, they'd be terminated from the program. We envision that there will probably be a need for an appeal process, and so we're allowing for that, or proposing to allow for that. Once we make a decision, applicants will be able to request an appeal in writing within ten business days of the decision, and must include any documentation or additional information to be considered in their appeal. And we envision establishing a three-person panel made up of city staff members, but non-housing staff, to peer review any appeals and make a decision on that. And then any decisions will be issued within ten days of the appeal hearing. So we want to give applicants an avenue to contest any decision that the city might have.
Is the council comfortable with with staff peer review, non-housing staff peer review?
And then just just some disclaimers that we're asking, that there will be some notifications required by the applicants to give to the city. If their landlord is terminating their occupancy in their unit, we are asking that the landlord, the tenant must notify us immediately. If the tenant intends to vacate their unit, they must notify us within ten business days of providing notice to the owner. If the tenant plans to be absent from the unit, that will be more than thirty days, they must notify us of that, and we must, you know, learn what the circumstances are. And we understand that applicants, once they're enrolled in the program, might have during that two-year term the need to move, and we are saying that we will allow them to move and continue their subsidy, as long as that subsequent unit qualifies in terms of being a legal residential unit per original criteria. There may be a period of time that an applicant, a senior household, might move from one unit, live with somebody, a relative, let's say, for a month while they're looking for another unit. We'll allow some reasonable period of time for them to be out of a unit before they lease up their next unit, but we won't be paying their subsidy during that time. Their subsidy will continue after they contract up another legal residential unit, and then complete out their twenty-four-month period. And just if there's a desire to 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 take a look at next steps and timing, we are looking at, once these program design parameters are are set by the city council, we need immediately need to go to the Social Security Office to get some determinations from them once we provide them these program design features. Our desire is that Social Security would not count our subsidy as income and have some negative effect on the applicant. There is a process that Social Security has, there is a rule that they have, where they could consider a program like this as the income not countable towards Social Security benefits, so there would be no harm to them, but it does require a process of us submitting an official letter, providing them the program design parameters, and them responding to us. We had talked about Santa Monica having a similar program, they went through that process with Social Security, and were able to secure their waiver. July and August, housing staff would work with human resources staff to initiate and hire the staffing necessary that was approved in the budget process for this program. Also, in July and August, housing staff will start to develop and test an electronic-based application program, and we would finalize the marketing and application plan that we had talked about earlier, and in August, we would bring that plan and report back to council as to how we envision that marketing plan and application plan to work. September, we would, if all things go well, begin marketing the program. October, receive applications for a two-week period, screen them in November, hopefully conduct a lottery in December, and then January, February, start screening applicants for eligibility, and then in February, March, start making subsidy payments.
Okay, Mr. Agajianian.
The question is generally, I mean, the what I want to say is I'm talking about in generality. Hopefully, our city attorney will figure out that we can ask for two years of residency in Glendale. The reason I'm saying that is that to make the pool smaller. Still, I'm worried the way we are going, maybe staff to look into it. I don't want to see like eighteen thousand people to apply, and the staff, they go through to verify whether they are eligible, whether they are getting help from other family members, this and that, to go through that applications to verify this is the right person, their income, how much is their income. This is a needs a big group of staff to look through this document. So if you go and look at it, and you have to add more limitation to make the pool smaller, otherwise, the money which we want to allocate and help the renters, it's going to go on on a staff which we have to hire, maybe ten other extra staff to do this. I mean, it will be come to the point that we are not helping the renter, it's just we are creating a bigger bureaucracy to manage this. So I think, I mean, my request or ask the staff to look into this, that what, how many applications we are going to get? So before we get involved with this process, otherwise later will be very difficult task.
Mr. Juan.
Mr. Agajianian, you've expressed this concern, and and we we understand and take it seriously. In fact, we'll be going to the Civil Service Commission to ask to make these unclassified positions so that we can ramp up and and down as need be. It it won't be creating a bureaucracy, so to speak. We we think we're going to have some initial needs, and we're going to try and do that with as little staff as possible. You have given us the authority to hire up to five people. If we need five, we'll we'll hire five. If we no longer need five, we'll then scale the project back down. What we don't want to do is create a a program that then we can't serve the people that you want to serve, simply because we don't have the human resource to do it. So we we are very cognizant of what you said, and that you would like to use as much of this to help the community. And and that is from my position on down, everybody involved in this program understands that concern.
And and I would just like to say, though, that based upon experience, there is some pre-screening that we can do before an application process. If we get eighteen thousand applications, and and to be fair, that eighteen thousand number does include a significant number of people outside of Glendale when we talk about that. So it's approximately eighteen thousand total households applied for that lottery, approximately ten thousand were residents of Glendale. So I think that smaller number is what we're really looking at. But there's a limit as to how much pre-screening we can do on every application before entering the lottery. I think of what I'm hearing from you is that if ten thousand people apply, you want to have the lowest number possible in the actual lottery. That would then require that we do in-depth screening on each applicant prior to a lottery, which will then stretch out the time for that lottery to be had. So what we're proposing is that we will do some initial pre-screening of the applications as we're inputting application information. Oh, you're not a resident of Glendale? I'm sorry, you cannot apply. Is your income above this a limit? Then there's no use in applying, you don't qualify. Screening like that, some screening after the applications are done to make sure we catch people that may not be truthful, but there's a limit as to how much we can screen. We might have a large number of people in a lottery, and as we start to qualify people We might have a large number of people in a lottery, and as we start to qualify people, some people might be disqualified because they shouldn't have been in there in the first place. But we think that's the best way to handle that. Otherwise, your lottery process is on down the line, much further out than I think what council would like to have.
I do have a card from the public. Why don't we hear this? Jack Dorakja?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members and staff. As the slides were going, as, as Mr. Zovak was going through the slides, there was one slide regarding disabled individuals and disability. I just want to make sure that you don't disregard that, you take that into consideration, because as things moved on, it moved more towards seniors, and it seems like, it seemed like the, the individuals who may have disabilities kind of went into the background, so please remember that. Specifically towards individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, I, I stress that point. I, I do have one scenario, though. What would happen if a landlord figures out, oh, this tenant is all of a sudden getting three hundred dollars from the city, so now I can increase their rent by a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars a month, because it, it'll just come out of their three hundred dollars. And then two years later, when that money gets pulled away from the tenant, now they're paying a lot more for their rent, and they can't afford it. So it kind of creates a vacuum for the renter. That's a scenario to think about. But again, please remember the individuals with disabilities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine?
That was one of the points that we were supposed to come back to, correct, Mr. Zovak? The preference or the criterion, was that?
Correct. Correct, we're going to that. And, and I would just answer that, the last comment that was made at the end. If a landlord were to find out that one of their tenants were involved in this program and somehow felt it was okay for them to increase the rent, there's nothing we can do under the program, the subsidy program itself, but that tenant would be able to avail themselves of the rental rights program. And if a landlord is increasing it over, close to three hundred dollars to try and match the subsidy, I would, I would think that that tenant would be eligible for relocation benefits in that type of scenario. So there are some safeguards with regards to that in another program that, that the council adopted. So, kind of at the very end of your PowerPoint, we, we kind of have the score sheet here. So just to go over some of the criteria, then, we did hear that there's a desire to have a mandate, a minimum qualification for applying to the program. They must be a Glendale resident to apply, and we heard that, that residency must be established for two years prior to the date of the application period, correct?
Right.
That they must be a renter household, that's a fairly easy one. The total household income cannot exceed the extremely low-income limits. We talked about rent burden. If you meet the other criteria, you automatically meet that rent burden criteria, there's nothing necessarily to prove further for that criteria. If we can get to where we kind of left it up in the air, senior, so if I remember correctly, there's a desire to require that all household members who apply must be age sixty-two and older to qualify, correct? Very good. And then within that senior category, a priority or preference is being provided in which any member of that household, who by just qualifying, they're all over sixty-two, sixty-two or older. If any member is seventy-five or older at time of application, they would be given priority. The entire household would be given priority.
Yes.
Okay. And then going to the issue of disability, is that a minimum qualification to apply for the program? Is there a desire to have it as a preference for those? So there'd be two preferences, one for seventy-five plus, one for disability?
I'd like to see it a, a preference.
Well, if you're, okay, so, let's define disability. Is it under the Social Security definition of disability?
There's two criteria.
Okay.
So there's a process in which you are qualified, if you're receiving Social Security, that they go through in qualifying you as disabled. So in that scenario, if someone proving that to us, they would show us their Social Security statement as part of their income qualifying, that statement would have a statement on it saying that this applicant is approved as a disability, disabled household per Social Security rules. It's fairly easy.
Does that knock them, does that knock them above the extremely low-income threshold of twenty thousand?
No.
Does not? They're still beneath that. How much is it? Fifteen, sixteen hundred for...
Approximately eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred? Okay. Okay, so...
And then, and then the second method by which someone can claim a disability is going through this Section 504 process, which is the process that exists under the Section Eight program. And that's going through doctor certifications per a specific criteria and guidelines that HUD sets up, and that's what we use.
So put it as a disability as a...
I thought we had decided that that was the way.
Yeah. I think we said disabled, right? That's going to keep it smaller anyway. Okay.
Okay.
That's what we'll go with.
So that would be a minimum qualification to apply for the program or a preference?
Minimum qualification.
So then, just to be sure, so you might have somebody who applies who's extremely low-income, is a renter household, Glendale resident, they are all sixty-two and older, but they're not disabled, they're not able to apply for the program.
I think we'll fill up with disabled. Don't we have a thousand? Wouldn't you think we have a thousand disabled that fit, that fit all that, that criterion?
It would, the challenge would be reaching them and informing them of the program requirements, yes.
I mean, all my complaints that I hear, they're all disabled. I mean, we can't afford it, the rent's too high, and I'm disabled.
I would say this...
I have a feeling that there's a lot of them out there.
We, we took a quick look at the Section Eight waiting list, those two thousand or so that are on there, about five hundred and fifty claim disability. So about one-fourth of that.
Those are the ones that are on the waiting list.
Those we hear from two thousand and one.
Yes, that just gives you a, a snapshot. One quarter of that list is a disabled, and if all were to apply...
I think we're going to fill up with disabled, whether it's a priority or, or a minimum qualification, that the minimum qualification is going to fill it up.
But, but have we decided that we're going by the, the stiffer...
Definition.
Definition of disability?
I think there's really just those two definitions. I don't think you can only accept Social Security. You have to allow for Social Security and/or the Section 504 certification process.
Which is the, what you use for Section Eight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that would be the one, then.
Say again? Oh, accept both.
Yes, accept both. Okay, so let's...
Let's do both. You have to accept both.
Believe me, we're still going to get ten thousand applicants.
I think by law, you're required to do both.
Okay. If you are required by law, let's accept both.
Okay.
So disabled, that's a minimum qualification applying to the program.
Yes, yes.
And again, senior, every household member over sixty-two, preference for, in which any member of that approved household might be seventy-five or...
Yes.
Can we go back to rent from a relative?
We, we mentioned that, it's, we follow the same rule of Section Eight, that you cannot rent from immediate family member.
Unless under a reasonable accommodation request.
Right.
Excellent.
Same, same, same rules apply to this, this.
With that, I think we have a good portion of the program design parameters set, that we will then be able to pursue some other things. Social Security Administration, we can start envisioning now how an application would look like for this, how a lottery process would look like, and we'd be coming back in August to give you an update on that. And then anything that we didn't think of today that we might have to come back to at that August meeting, we could address it as well. I, I know this is kind of a long meeting and tedious, but if, having this discussion now will certainly help the application process and the information we get out to the community that'll make that part simpler and clearer for them.
Right. And, and again, let's, as you mentioned, let's remind the community that this is a, as authorized, currently, it's only a two-year program.
We will draw up disclaimers that we would have multiple signatures required in different places. Typically, though, there tends to be that still complaint at the end of that term, like most programs, but we'll try, try and deal with it and, and forewarn them as best as possible.
I, I just want to thank staff. Thank you, Zovak, Mr. Zovak and staff for this report and for helping us along this, this journey, okay?
Thank you very much.
Do we need a motion for that?
If you could have a motion, a motion with the parameters outlined in the staff court, plus the additional direction that provided by you.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agadjanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Here in Ajarian.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Is there a closed session?
There was, but it is off calendar now, so there is not anything for you for closing.